Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 8th Town Board Work Session. Would everyone please write for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just have one brief announcement before we begin the work session. Next Thursday, we have an important meeting to discuss the EPA waterline project. And important because a lot of people are coming to it. We have all our town representatives, myself, highway superintendent, our town engineer, our chief of police, our town attorney, our clerk, the EPA's project manager, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers representatives, the contractor for the project, Conti Construction with their site managers, their project managers, safety and health managers, subcontractors, New York State DEC's project manager, the Department of Health representative, Department of Transportation representative, Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, utility representatives, Frontier, Spectrum, and Central Hudson, subcontractors and suppliers, Dutchess County Rail Trail representatives, and all of our water systems, our engineer will represent all of them, Metro North, and the designer, CDM Smith. So, it's an important meeting. It's for the EPA waterline going down 82 for the Superfund site. And as we, as the time progresses and we get more dates, there'll be community meetings and other public announcements. I'll make sure that everybody has that in well enough time if you want to attend that. I'll try and make sure that goes on Channel 22 and also on our website. And if there's any questions, of course, please call my office, 221-4303, with any questions. And besides that, let's open the work session. We have, today, we have our traffic engineer consultants with us, Hudson Valley Engineering. Thank you guys for coming. We have Brendan Fitzgerald and Jack Orton. Thank you guys for coming. We'll be discussing the potential DOT Route 82 Hamlet project. And it's quite extensive. And why don't I let you guys start it off?
All right. So, thanks, first of all, thanks for having us in tonight. We love to talk about this project, so. You can see from the title, we're calling it Governor's Boulevard Extension to Unity Plaza and Route 82. This project has had a number of different names, but that's where we currently are. Just to give you a little bit, a little history of the project, a little background, the impetus for the project was mitigation for the Hopewell Glen residential development. It's had a pretty long evolution. We've been working on it since 2009-ish. It's started up, installed a few times, and we're in one of those areas where it stalled now. We're looking to try to get a project back on track. It is a, what's termed as a reverse betterment, which is a kind of a confusing term, but in this case, the developer gave the town some money, $800,000 to be exact, to, towards the design and improvements for the impact of the Hopewell Glen development. With that money, the town was going to be tasked with designing what those improvements would be. And then from there, since they impacted a state highway, the DOT would also participate in the project. And they would do any right-of-way acquisition, they would help and assist in public participation, and then they would actually construct the project. So, that's where the term reverse betterment comes from. So, instead of, instead of the town contributing to a project, in a way, calling it and letting them do the whole thing, the town's going to have the beginning control of it. The job originated, it was actually called the Fishkill Road Project. It was, at first, the first rendition of it was to improve the intersection of Fishkill Road and Route 82 at Palin Road. We developed several alternatives for that project, including a roundabout there and a four-legged intersection. The fatal, the fatal flaw was the railroad tracks that go through that area. The DOT wouldn't let us, and their Rails Division, wouldn't let us cross the railroad tracks twice with an improvement. Even though it's a sporadically-used line, it's still considered to be an active railroad. And having, not being able to position the intersection such that we had one crossing, we'd always need two, one on Fishkill Road and one at 82. And they were in such close proximity, it, they didn't want to further that alternative. So, we started looking at other alternatives. We kind of took a look back. I'll show you, this is sort of an aerial of the Hamlet, just so you can sort of, this is exactly what we did. We sort of stepped back and looked back at, well, what else can we do? And we sat down with some representatives from the town and from the DOT, and we developed a different option. And that option was to actually extend Governor's Boulevard, which is the main, the main road that goes through Hopewell Glen. And looked to where we could bring that into 82. And then, looking at, looking at Route 82, you can switch, just looking at some of the characteristics of Route 82, it has a significant amount of traffic. It has about 18,000 cars a day. It's a little bit less than that. It's actually, traffic has been on the decline since 2006. It's been holding pretty steady the last number of years, but even, I think the last time we counted in 2015, it had dipped a little bit below 18,000, but it's right up in the, in the high 17,000 range. 82 in the Hamlet has very high accident rate. The corridor as a whole has an accident rate that's sort of two, two times the statewide average. And what that, what that means is, on a similar facility, they keep track of all the accidents on state roads throughout the entire state and other two-lane roads with a center turn lane like Route 82 has. This road experiences two times that. Now, certain accidents, like rear ends and right-angle accidents, are three, four, and even, one of them, I think, is more than five times higher than the statewide average. So, certain accident types are even a lot, a lot higher. The corridor as a whole, it doesn't, doesn't operate very efficiently. You know, the three signals from 376 to Unity Street, they don't necessarily function very well together. Sometimes you can get through one light and get stuck at the next, and I'm sure you all know that, I'm preaching to the choir on that one. And then when you look, when you look at the Hamlet as a whole, in terms of pedestrian facilities, there's not, there isn't a comprehensive, you know, network in the Hamlet. So, these are all things that we were looking at, well, maybe we could use this project as an impetus to help improve some of this stuff. And then, you know, one of the, one of the detrimental characteristics of the corridor also is, is just the number of, number of access points along 82. You know, we're only looking to have, you know, several within a mile stretch here. In one, I think in one segment, the busiest, we have 16, 16 driveways in 900 feet of roadway. So, you can see why it gets confusing and congested and can be unsafe. Looking at what we would like to have as some objectives for the project would be, obviously, to reduce the corridor delay, improve safety. Some of the things we're going to look at are raising the median and some, some access control, develop better pedestrian accommodations, and then, obviously, use any project as a mechanism to enhance the aesthetics and improve the overall character of the Hamlet. So, from that, from looking at all that and looking at that far-out aerial, this is what we had come up with a couple of years ago as our preferred alternative in coordinating with the DOT. And this, as you can see at the top in the north, is, that's the connection of Fishkill Road and Governor's Boulevard. It would bring a road down adjacent to Unity Plaza, next to where William Tell used to be, and opposite Trinca Lane. We've looked at different alignments and different alternatives here, but when we started to look at the corridor and thinking about having to make safety improvements and capacity improvements, it really lent itself to an installation of a modern roundabout. So, from there, it just kind of developed further. If we, if we put a roundabout in at Trinca and Governor's Boulevard, in order to get circulation and access to the businesses on both sides of the road, we thought that we needed another one. So, the concept would be to replace the light at Unity Street with another roundabout. This gives, how long is this, Jack?
About, about 1,000 feet.
About 1,000 feet apart. It's, you know, even based on the corridor efficiency, you would, you know, it wouldn't inhibit access to any of the businesses on either side of the roadway. This, this alternative has a raised median, which wouldn't allow left turns. It would replace that dual left-turning lane that you have there now. Just some things to understand about those dual left-turning lanes, they were very popular at a time. They got installed all around the country. They have, they have kind of lost favor over the last few decades. They also have a limit to them. When you get to about 20,000 cars a day, the efficiency of those lanes decreases and accidents really can increase exponentially, really, as the traffic gets up on those upper limits. And we're, and you're that close in this quarter. We're at 18,000 cars, you know, 10% increase in traffic will push you up to that 20,000, and it really would make that dual-left-turning lane sort of functionally obsolete. We also looked, again, to improve pedestrian characteristics of the corridor. So, the connection down from Governor's Boulevard, as you know now, the Hopewell Glen has sidewalk within their community. That sidewalk comes all the way down to Fishkill Road. The idea would be to extend that sidewalk network all the way down into the Hamlet and into Unity Plaza. And then also install a new sidewalk on the south side of Route 82, where there currently is, when there, right now, there's only the sidewalk network on the, on the, on the north side. Going one step further than that, we realized there's a lot of businesses, a lot of deliveries, a lot of employees. So, a sort of secondary concept kind of rolled out of this in terms of looking into potentially providing a service road behind those businesses. If you look at that aerial, it kind of tells the picture. You can see the backs of those properties, even on the Unity Plaza side, are, have been kind of neglected. I know there's been some improvements to the bank and some of the other properties now that Unity Plaza has gone in, but you can see on the other side, you know, that the back of those properties are definitely underutilized. And some service roads would really help pulling some of the, some of the delivery vehicles and some of the employee traffic and other, other traffic off of the main road and be able to get to these businesses and serve them. And there, and there's easy connections with this scenario, connecting to the roundabouts and to the new extension. It's, it's something that could be a really good, really good addition to that. So, we did all that, and then, you know, we kind of got focused in on this area and we started to really fall in love with this project. And we understand from counting, being out in this corridor and counting traffic on 82 and counting all the intersections, we counted all the surrounding intersections, too. There's these problems at 376. So, we saw, what would, what would it look like if we extended this project sort of one more step? And if, if we did, this, this was a conceptual plan that we came up with, which was to add two more, two more modern roundabouts, one at the north, or south 376 and one at north 376. What we show on the screen up there and what's on the board behind that board, if, I don't know if you want to, if Tom or Nick could just switch that over, give you a better view. These are actually, these two roundabouts are actually offset from each other. And what that does is, if you're entering from either side, you have to go into the circle. But if you want to go straight, you can, it enables you to bypass the second, the second roundabout. So, it's, right. So, if you go, you come, if you were coming into the village from, say, the Beekman Road area, you were traveling westbound, you would come in, you would go through the circle, but if you weren't going to go down at 376, you could just bypass the roundabout and continue down the corridor. It's, these have been installed in a number of locations around the country, and they just sort of help traffic flow, and they help improve the capacity of a roundabout. Roundabouts, you know, right now in New York State, roundabouts are being built all over the place. The majority of them are single-lane, modern roundabouts, which are very efficient for handling traffic. They, you know, the literature will tell you that they can handle about 25,000 cars very effectively. You know, some of that depends on the balance of the traffic, but, you know, they, they do have the capability of single-lane roundabouts working, working here in the Hamlet, based on the traffic that, that we counted. Jack just brought up, this is just a picture of a, of a single-lane, modern roundabout. And, you know, I don't know if you can go back to that picture. Let's rewrite that. Just, you know, some of the, some of the characteristics of a, of a modern roundabout are, it's a relatively small circle. So, you know, a large, a larger truck would have to climb up on the interior apron to get through the circle. It fits, you know, certainly, regular vehicles and smaller trucks, they can stay right in the, in the circulating path. But the bigger tractor trailer can make it through, but they would, they would mount up on the interior apron, and that's what it's for. But they're designed this way to keep traffic slowed down. And, and, you know, most modern roundabouts, the, you know, the intention is to slow traffic down to about 20 miles an hour and have, you know, smooth transition flow. You can switch to the next one. So, this is just sort of a little summary of these, some of these features of modern roundabouts. Certainly, we talked about the efficiency of traffic flow. They, they work as great gateways into a community. I mean, they're, they're, they look good. You have the opportunity in the, in the center to put different things, whether it be landscaping or a monument, or we've seen clocks. We've done, we just got done with the construction of a roundabout that we designed in the city of Poughkeepsie at Creek Road. The city, at the time when we put the job out, they, they didn't have enough money to do anything in the middle of the circle, but they're now figuring out what they want to do there, and they've, they've had some interesting ideas about what they want to put in the center of the circle. But it really, it really does provide a great gateway opportunity. Comms traffic, like I talked about, the geometry as such, and the splitter islands are set up in a way to divert traffic and slow it down to about 20 miles an hour. And what that does, you know, the best thing that that does is that it lets people, they don't need, they don't need that traditional gap in cars, need to enter the traffic stream. When you're, everyone's going slow, you know, once, once you get used to it, you don't need that same long space to get in. You can make room for each other and sort of get in. I mean, the ones in the U.S. still don't work as effectively as the ones in Europe. They're a lot more used to them than we are, but they're getting a lot better here. We're seeing some of the data that's coming in on circles around the country that have, have come close to some of the efficiency they get in Europe. They have smaller cars there, and they've been driving on them for decades, so it's a little bit different. Also, it gives you a great opportunity for pedestrian accommodations. Each leg of the roundabout can have a crossing. You only have to look one direction to see if cars are coming, cross into the middle. You'll have a refuge to stand there and look one direction again and cross, and finish your cross. So, they really help in being able to circulate pedestrians. Actually, I think I missed even mentioning, another great pedestrian aspect of this, which, which the, the Hamlet could use, is this would enable a connection to go up to the Dutchess Rail Trail, with the sidewalk network going all the way up through Governor's Boulevard and through Hopewell Glen and connecting to the, connecting to the Dutchess Trail. And that, that trail is, in the next couple of years, due to get expanded, I think, 23 miles. So, it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be a pretty incredible regional facility. So, having good pedestrian access is good. Lastly, you put up there, energy and pollution. You know, without traffic signals, the maintenance is obviously less, no electric for the traffic signals. And then the pollution, it cuts down on cars that are idling, standing still. So, there's, there's some good benefits. This little bar chart, it just, it's just a, just sort of an illustration of many times, and ourselves included, we, we worked on the design of that roundabout in the city of Poughkeepsie for, I don't even know how many years.
14.
A long time. But it got, it was, it was contemplated as a roundabout at the time the DOT was doing the Raymond Avenue project, and the city thought that those roundabouts were going to divert traffic into the city, so they were against that project. If they were against that project, they certainly felt like they couldn't endorse a roundabout in the city. So, we initially developed it as a, as a, as a regular signalized intersection. And then, there was change in administration. We presented a roundabout again, and we were able to get a roundabout through. But, you know, there was a lot of negative, you know, connotations about roundabouts. And, and then you build them and people use them, and the attitudes really changed. I think, you know, even the, even there was a lot of detractors on the 55 project, and I would say that the majority of those people have come around to really, really like, like that project. So, that's all it is. I'm going to just break out of the PowerPoint for a minute and show you. This is an animation. We've put, this is in one of the traffic analysis programs that you call it Synchro. We can put the traffic in. I don't know if, yeah, maybe you can hit that first light switch, Scott, that'd be great. It's, obviously, it's going fast, but I don't know if you can sort of make it out. But this is, this is, you know, an aerial overview of the Hamlet. The, the cars and the number of cars that are in there is realistic. We put the actual traffic that we counted. So, you can sort of see how it functions. This is, I don't know if this is the AM or PM peak.
PM peak.
So, it's the PM peak on, on 82. You'll, if you, if you watch close enough, you'll see some cars queue up. Even Unity Street, that, that's, you'll see right now, it's actually, the queue is backing up a little bit. But it clears itself out pretty quickly. And, and this is just putting that traffic data in there. You know, this is, again, I'm calling it conceptual design because we haven't spent a great deal of detail working, you know, or a great deal of time working out the details. But there's things, things that you can do to help balance the traffic better so that you get even better results than what we're showing you up there on the screen. But it's, it's just, it's just a way to show you that it really works. I mean, if the project moves forward from here, there's other, we use a program called VISM now, which really models these things much more realistically, and they're, they're great demonstrations to be able to show the public. All right. I'd mentioned, I think if you, I'd mentioned, oops. Is that, are you going to go back into the, is that, oh, no, still there. So, I did mention a lot of stuff about access management, and, you know, that's, you know, the combination of the left turners on 82 and the fact that there's so many access points into the businesses, you know, that's something that contributes to a lot of the safety problems out there. And I think I even mentioned that the, you know, the number of, the number of access points and accidents is, I mean, there's a correlation there that's, that's big. That dual left-turning lane and, in comparison to a raised median, you look at the statistic up there is that you'll get about 30% reduction in accidents by just raising the median and getting rid of that dual left-turn lane. And I think I already mentioned, when you get up to about 20,000 cars, they, they really start to fail. So, it kind of brings us to where, you know, what, where we are and how we want to go forward. So, we started out at Fishkill Road, we moved to Governor's Boulevard, we developed something that we put in front of the DOT. The DOT actually, when, it's, right now, it doesn't show up on their, on their tip, but when it was on their tip, they had allocated $3 million for the project in addition to the, the money that the town has. But, you know, just a preliminary look at what we thought the cost would be, it would probably, looking at all, if we, if we did the whole corridor and all four, would probably be in the eight, eight to 12 million dollar range. I can tell you that Route 55 cost $9 million when it was constructed, three, three roundabouts and about 1,000 feet more length than what we're showing on, on the board today. So, I think the first step is, and, you know, we've, we've sat down, talked to Nick and Scott, to want to get this project back on track. The thing we need to do first is get back in front of the DOT, find out where the funding is and the schedule of the original project. We have had some discussions with the previous regional director, who just got promoted and moved on up to Albany, but he, he had indicated to us that they were going to be looking to fund some Main Street projects within the region, within Region 8 and the counties that comprise Region 8. So, you know, looking at this, it's sort of an ideal Main Street project. You know, one of the things that kind of distinguishes this 82 corridor in the Hamlet from 55 is, 55 is pretty much a commercial corridor. There aren't any residential houses. You look at 82 in Hopewell Junction, there's residential houses all around. And then you get that sidewalk network built and you connect to the Dutchess Rail Trail. I mean, the benefit, I mean, the, you know, the, putting forth an argument for a Main Street project is, is, in my mind, pretty straightforward. But we would need to meet with the DOT and talk about that, and then look to see if we can find some of those funds that they talked about and potentially get an increase in some of the funding on what's allocated now and try to make a comprehensive improvement. Where we, where we stopped last time is we had a draft, what they call a design report, where we looked at the, all the existing conditions and the environmental stuff and the traffic. We would need to refresh that a little bit, since it's now a couple of years stale. We never got to the point of having like a public outreach or a public participation program, but, you know, we would need to do that and then finalize that sort of design document or that scoping ended a phase and then move into the construction part. And right-of-way acquisition is another part of this. I think there's a couple, I think at least three private parcels that that proposed extension of Governor's Boulevard would cross. So, that acquisition would need to start. We actually have already done the preliminary mapping. We've given that to the DOT, they're at the point where the DOT is, you know, could take that over and look to acquire any property that was needed for the job. That's pretty much what I wanted to talk about, and I don't know if there's any questions, Nick? We'd be more than happy to.
Well, one thing I wanted to ask was, when we start going through this phase and we propose a project like this to them, something that's very important to me, and I'm sure my board also, is this access road behind the businesses. Because that's, I think, key during construction of this. How, what's a, what's a timetable for, for this, would be start to finish?
The construction?
Right.
Well, they did 55 in a, in a construction season. So, you know, some of it depends on when you can get it out on the street, but, you know, certainly conceivably, and depending on the, you know, what the final scope of the project is. Right now, the way it's drawn on those boards up there, we stayed within the existing curb lines of 82. So, that makes it a lot less impact in terms of construction. So, you know, it could be one full construction season job of an impact, and then, and then, you know, it would be coming back probably in another construction season, sort of finish off things, might be landscaping, things of that nature. But it's certainly a job that could be done in one, one full construction season, but that's.
How long is a construction season?
From, from like April to November. But it certainly could be done in a, in a season like that. And 55 was actually done. And that was even a little bit more of a complicated staging project because they had full-debt pavement that they had to construct and widen on both sides, and it was a tricky build.
And if we do get on the tip for this, which is a traffic improvement project, is that right?
It's a transportation improvement program.
Program, okay. Transportation improvement program.
Right.
So, if we get on that tip and they fund this, what's the likelihood, what is the, I should say, rather, what is the likelihood that they will listen to our comments?
Oh, I think, I think very high. I mean, if you look, I mean, even, you know, my little familiarity with even Robinson Lane, I mean, you know, a lot of that project, a DOT-sponsored project where, you know, they, they certainly took, you know, considerations from the comments they got at their meetings and stuff and incorporated that. I mean, we've, we've sat down already at least, you know, a half dozen times with the DOT, you know, from when it started at Fishkill Road to here. So, this is an unfamiliar with them. I mean, it's been more than, it's been almost two years now. It's been two years since we sat down with them last time. But they, you know, they were, you know, they liked the project. You know, they were enthusiastic. Part of the problem is, they're, they're having so much attrition, even the people that we sat down and spoke to at that meeting are now, some of them retired and some of them moved on.
Wow.
So, it's kind of influx. The current, the current regional director, the acting regional director, Lance McMillan, I mean, he's, he's actually a product of these Fishkills, so that, that's, that's good. But I think there's certainly.
That's always good.
Yeah. They are certainly in tune, I think, with, you know, with listening to the concerns of, of the town and of the public in general.
Because I think that's critical to have that, that back road, you know? The businesses and the people to get to them and less impact.
And I think even, you know, Scott had mentioned, you know, when we first started, too, it's, it is something that enables even to lessen the impact of construction, where, you know, that could be something that could be done prior to, prior to impacting traffic on 82, which then would enable to help alleviate some of the traffic on 82 and still let these businesses function.
Right.
As they need to.
Right. Board members, you have questions?
Well, some roads of the business area, those are very small roads. Are you planning on enlarging?
The service road on the south side?
Well, go through Trinca Lane to 376.
Uh, yeah. Well, you see in, sort of red on the plan there?
Right.
Yeah, that would be, that would, we're showing that as like a standard 24-foot roadway.
So, you're not going to be enlarging that road over there? I don't think we can, so.
That would be a new road, though, wouldn't it?
What, what's that?
Is that a new road?
That's, yeah, that's new. I mean, what's, what exists back there now is just, you know, just access behind the businesses. There isn't, there's no road there.
You think there's a road beyond that?
It's not Trinca Lane, it's another road.
This road, man?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's.
It's a new road.
Okay.
It's not there now.
It would be a connecting service road.
That's the road I'm proposing we have to have.
It connects Unity Street to Trinca Lane, just behind, right at the edge of the back of properties that exist there now, as, as a service road to, to, to help enhance that, you know, access to those businesses that are there.
The other thing is the road that goes through by Unity Plaza, where it's red, your change in geometry there a little bit to smooth out that curve.
Right. So, part of that infrastructure is. Now, so part of that infrastructure is already there, based on the, on the, for the Unity Plaza development, yeah, we show smoothing that curve out, it's a little, it's a kind of an elbow there if you drive through there. But just to smooth that out and change the access just a little bit so that it's more conducive to being, you know, an access to the properties that are joining 82 and to still service the plaza, so there's full access to the, to the parking for the plaza there. And then a connection out to the connector road to Governor's Boulevard.
Now, you were working on this a few years back, and you proposed that at that time the cost was about $3 million.
The, what did we have for an estimate at the time?
We had about, I think, four and a half million.
Four and a half million. At the time, that, what was on the tip from the DOT was a $3 million contribution, and then, and then whatever remained from the funds that Toll Brothers contributed to the town.
Now we're looking at $12 million, how much DOT is going to push?
Well, actually, what, you know, one of the reasons I wanted to come and talk about to say is what we'd be proposing is to try to talk to the DOT to see if they could identify some additional funding sources, based on, you know, what we've, what we've, the knowledge we've gained and what we've learned from talking with them about the region and the DOT region as a whole, looking to try to find some regional Main Street projects. And then looking to try to get the whole shortfall from the DOT, that's the goal.
So our outlay would be what we've outlaid already with the 800,000 contribution that we got from the developer?
Correct.
So, other than that, this would be a DOT-funded project?
If they can find the.
If they could find the funds, right. So that's why you're.
I mean, obviously, money's tight, programs are, programs are full, but there's, you know, it depends, you know, you have to generate interest for a job, you know, and you got to, you got to start there. And that's, that's kind of what we want to sort of instill in you tonight. I mean, there's, you know, right now, we're working on a project in Woodbury at the Woodbury Commons, you know, the governor has stuck $150 million into rebuilding that interchange to enhance that, that development in that area and that corridor, you know, so a big investment. I mean, this, these are the kind of projects that the state is looking at right now, you know, what, what does this do, you know, for this area and what can it do? And it can do a lot, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you look at this project and it's just, what, the benefits are endless. It connects the rail trail, which is another governor project that, you know, he's, he's the one who's pushing this additional, this Empire Trail, 23 acres. It, you know, you are starting to see the development come back, right, where, you know, you're going to, the sports dome is stalled, but it's there. You're starting to redevelop the IBM property there, right? That's been subdivided to a different ownership. Those things are going to happen and, you know, this, and there hasn't been a project here in a long time, right? 82 and, you know, other than some sporadic DOT projects, there hasn't been a comprehensive project here in a long time. So, you know, you're due in my mind, you know? So I think, you know, you got to, it's good that we, you know, this project or the way it started, you know, could be the impetus to try to get in front of the right people with the right message and see if you can find some, you know, some, some funding for it. It's not, you know, we're not talking astronomical dollars, you know, and they have, you know, the DOT, like, they're proud of their Route 55 project, they really are, and they should be, rightfully so. But, you know, if, if they like that project, in my mind, they should like this one more.
Yeah, I spoke to a lady today at Rotary that lives right off of the 55 corridor, and she said it was, you know, in the beginning, it was horrible, everybody was against it. And, but the traffic would back up from the high school all the way past the taconic.
Yeah, all the way class.
Yeah, all the way down there. Now, no traffic at all, no, no backup, nothing. She was really.
I'm a frequent, I live up in Salt Point, but I'm a frequent user of that quarter. I shop there, my kids go to some, some school stuff there. But it's one of these things too, you drive it, I mean, I've watched the evolution of people getting better at driving it, and it's really a lot different now. Beginning, it was, it was a little, it was a little scary, but now people really know how to use it. And it's a, it's a different mentality. You go in there and it's just a smooth, a smooth ride through these traffic circles. And one of the things, we're showing you a peak hour of traffic, right? So what, this is what's going to happen in some of the worst-case scenarios, you're going to have some queues back up into circles. But what happens the other 90% of the day is that there is, you don't have to stop. You get to just travel right through your corridor, you get, you get to do a U-turn and get to whatever business you want to. I mean, it functions in a way, you know, that, that, it's just, it's so much better than having to get stuck at a traffic light for 60 to 90 seconds and then, and then race to the next one, you know, it's just, it's just a different mentality. Understand now the access to all the adjoining businesses, rights in, rights out, you only have to look one direction. Modern roundabouts, a typical four-legged intersection has 32 points of conflict. A modern roundabout has eight points of conflict. So, you know, you're making six less decisions every time you go to make a turn, just think, you know, think about that. These are, I mean, they really, they really do work. I mean, that's, you know, that's why you see them all over the world, and that's why we're starting to see them in the US. And, you know, as, does, does an evolution everything? The Woodbury project we're working on is a, it's a diverging diamond interchange, where you actually come into the interchange and you switch over to the other side of the road and take an unobstructed left onto, onto Route 17. But it's a, it's a completely different concept. There's one, one like it in Rochester, I think there's like 90 across the country, but there's one in Rochester, New York. But it's, you know, these new, new innovative designs are intended to, you know, be able to handle, you know, we have fixed space and we have to make the best of that space. And modern roundabouts, diverging diamonds and other types of intersections and interchanges are what's going to improve traffic conditions.
Right. Now, one thing a little got brought up years ago, are we going to close any driveways in this plan?
We don't show it. I mean, any road would benefit from consolidating access points. So it should be something that is a consideration of any project that's in a corridor, a commercial corridor like this. We don't, we're not showing it on this plan mainly because it, you know, the improvement is that we have a raised median, you can't cross over and make a left turn, so everything is a right in and right out. But if I have two driveways that are 50 feet apart, would the road benefit from one of those not being there? Absolutely. So that should be a part of it. It's not, you know, in this conceptual plan, we're not showing it, but no one would lose access. But if we could combine access points and whether it's cooperation between adjoining property owners.
Parking spots too.
You could get more parking spots. And if there's a trade-off there, I mean, it's always hard when you have different ownership to get that, that level of cooperation.
It's driveway, not mine.
But it certainly should be, it certainly should be a consideration. And it needs to be a consideration.
The only other question I got, and I don't know whether you'd know the answer, is that other project still on the road? Plan still at the railroad bridge? Is that still in, have you heard that on the state plan lately?
What?
Railroad Bridge.
82.
82 and the railroad bridge.
82 and the railroad bridge. I don't think it's, again, anywhere in the foreseeable future, but that's, I don't know exactly, I don't think anything's on the, I mean, nothing's on the tip, but.
I mean, that comes, no, that comes back every couple of years. Oh, yeah, they're taking that out for the next two, three years. I've been hearing that for 30 years.
I mean, now, now they're, I don't know if the rail trail has any impact on that.
It's going to cross there.
Right, it's going to cross there.
If the bridge are over, yeah, they're evaluating what they're going to do.
It would benefit if that bridge was down.
Yeah, right. It'd benefit if the bridge is a little bit longer, they accommodate the rail trail. So, you know, sometimes, sometimes one thing leads to another, right? So, I mean, again, it's never, in my mind, you have to never stop talking, especially when, you know, when you're talking to the people that have the ability to.
No, the rail trail goes under the bridge right now.
It doesn't go anywhere right now.
Yeah, it does. They built a path and a parking lot on the other side of the bridge by Williams.
By Williams?
Okay.
And they're going to extend that, that's where the Empire Trail will start.
So right now, the rail trail goes under it?
Goes under. But is it, is it a full trail or just a full width or just an access?
I don't know, I can't go that way anymore because I used to walk through my backyard to go to Stockyard and they put a frigging fence up my backyard. So now I got to go half a mile to go to a restaurant that was in my backyard.
Okay, we'll talk to the DOT about your restaurant habits. Okay, yeah, Scott, you have some comments?
Can you just comment on the treatment of Fishkill Road and 82? Do you have an idea what's going to happen there? Um, yeah, I think what we would look to do, and I think in our last proposal, we still look to let, allow left turns off of 82 into Fishkill Road and then, and then have, have rights out. I mean, it would still be a connection point there. We did look at. So eliminate would be a no-left turn? Right. Be a no-left turn. Coming out. Coming out. You could make a left turn in. In, okay. And a right turn out. That's where we sort of left off last time with our analysis, based on the traffic that we had. It helped, it helped alleviate some of the traffic into the, into the Hamlet if need be. Okay. And then you're looking for a letter right from the town, Town Board, to endorse this project at some point? Or just, yeah, and to. Or to further it? To further it and to, and to get, you know, to get an audience back in front of the DOT. I think, I think that's where it needs to start, a letter from the town, and then, and then we can request a meeting and then we would accompany the town to a meeting.
So when, when did the project go awry for the other project that you said, was it ever on the tip?
Yeah, it was on the tip.
Oh, it was on the tip.
It was, you know, out in.
Funding.
Well, actually, it's closer than it used to be. It was out in like 19, 19 or 20 at the time. But, you know, with, as projects, a big project gets funded and then everything gets pushed out and then, you know, it's a fluctuating thing, they get pulled back in and pushed back out all the time. What's happening now is, you know, there's a lot more houses being built there now, right? Or I don't even, I don't know what's, what is it built out to now? At least 100, around 100. Oh, so it was, okay. And they're continuing to build, I mean. They have, yeah. So, you know, right now, I mean, the impetus, like I said, the impetus of this project was mitigation for the traffic that.
Right.
That was going to develop. So you're starting to see that. So now, you know, so it's the right time to have the discussion. And then there's a process ahead of, ahead of anything, even if, even if it was, if it's, you know, just a connection of Governor's Boulevard down, there's right-of-way acquisition. There's environmental process stuff that has to get done. So, you know, anything is a year out. So, you know what I mean? So you got to, you got to, we need to start talking about it now.
So that was my next question. In a perfect world, if everything went good and we proposed a project that we like and they would agree to the back road and everything else, the tip would be what, three, four years, maybe longer?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the tip is three to five years. So I would say it would be, that would be, that would be the level of it.
Okay.
You know, and then, again, the best thing to do to get a project construction is to get everything, into construction is to get everything else done. So if you can acquire right-of-way, get through the environmental process, design a job, if it's there, and then money, money becomes available.
They like that.
Right. And go out the door. I mean, you know, we had the incentive projects, things that were shovel-ready got built. So that's, you want to get your job as close to shovel-ready as possible and then, and then hope for a break or wait it out, one or the other, but.
So as far as the funding is concerned, do you do that, your company does that? Or do you also need the town?
Absolutely need the town, yeah. We need, we need to, we need to have, you know, we need to, we need to sit down at a meeting with DOT and have the town and know that, you know, that the town wants to endorse a project. And, and, you know, I think, I think there's, you know, like I said, enough to go on where you can say, you know, here's something. You know, we did present part of this to the DOT already, and like I said, they liked it. It's just a matter of timing and the right people, I think, so.
But to be clear, the funding comes from DOT.
The funding comes from.
The town needs to try to push it along, further along, but the funding comes from DOT, aside from the contribution from Toll Brothers.
The construction funding, right.
Right. We get a fully paid project, if it were.
But that's what we got to, that's what we sort of, that's what you have to convince the DOT.
Well, it's our tax dollars, it's everyone's tax dollars anyway, but benefiting our town.
Projects, projects enter the tip from all different mechanisms, right? So they do pavement evaluations, they do bridge ratings, they do safety and accident studies, pavement condition, all, you know, a lot of things lead to projects. So, you know, but another mechanism is, you know, you know, this has, this has a little bit of all of that. You know, you got high accident locations, you have other things at play, you got development happening. So, I mean, there's things that, that can give you an argument to say, you know, we need, we need a project on the tip. And it's, you know, it's not, although, you know, it sounds, it's a good chunk of money, but it's not, it's not one of those things that, that should seem, in my mind, like a pipe dream. You know, it's, it's a reasonable amount of money for, for the benefit that you get from it.
So I'm here, this question, typically to get on the tip, you first get on the tip and then the design begins, that's part of the tip funding, right, is the design?
Which you have.
In this case, we already have the funding.
You already have the funding.
So we go ahead and make the job shovel-ready, so we're already way ahead in that sense.
Right. But you need, but you do need to, you need the DOT to come along because, again, the DOT is going to acquire any right-of-way.
Right.
And the DOT is also going to, you know, help with our public participation program, but you, so you need to get to them to get it to be, you know, real to them and then, and then, exactly right, we don't need to depend on that. And then it's just, you know, and there already is a project, there's a project on the books, it's $3 million.
It's got a PIN number already.
And it's got a PIN number already, it's not, you know, it's not, we're not making up a new project, we just want to expand it. And there was, you know, there was, you know, I mean, there's been a lot of ideas that have floated around here for decades, right, about realigning 376, there's all kinds of projects that have been around in the past. This is just, this is a, you know, you know, maybe, maybe, this makes something realistic for what's out there, you know?
I think this also dovetails with the original, or the last master plan, done in 90 or whenever it was done, with the roundabout concept and raised median, I think it's consistent with that.
Right.
Well, I mean, if we're coming to the end of our transportation life of the, they call it the suicide lane, then any improvement would be greatly appreciated. So, okay, so then our next step is we would send a letter in conjunction, you will help us with that to the DOT, and that'll be our next step, and then we'll go from there, right?
Yeah.
Okay? Excellent. Thank you. Brendan, thank you. Something to think about, right? All right. Next thing on the agenda is our renovation, possible renovation. So I've discussed a few times that our Town Board, our Town Board, our Town Hall needs some dire need of renovation. So I've talked to all the Town Board members about, about it and a little history that our Town Board, our Town Hall was built in 1966, started in 1966, that's 52 years ago, and it hasn't received any real major renovations since then. And, you know, we have grown as a town since then, and there's a little handout on the proposed back building. So we've grown and we need new space and we've actually utilized other buildings in town for other departments, recreation and others, that has helped us, police department, and we've managed to do well. So I'm happy about that, but, you know, some departments, we need to stay here in the, in the center of town. And I've, I've had a department head meeting and I've discussed some of this, that I'm proposing to move some of the departments in town, and that would dovetail with our proposed renovation. And also, it would also help in the efficiency and sharing of town employees, which I also discussed at our department head meeting. So one of the things that we were discussing, we needed a little more office space. In the back of the building, we have a rec-maintenance building that we would try to convert to office space. It's roughly about twelve hundred square feet, this is the plan that I gave to you guys. And it just basically shows an office and desks, record storage room, which we have now, that was downstairs where the, there, the, the employee break room is. Plan to move that for the employees and bathrooms also for that back, for that back building. I have, our engineers been, you know, working on this and we're trying to do as much in-house as possible, that would save us, save us a lot of dollars. Also, when we would come into the main building, some of the moving arounds that I was thinking was to move the assessor department next to the tax receiver department because they really work together. And a lot of the residents who come often stop at the assessor and the tax receiver together, now they're separated. And also, those two departments do help each other when their busy seasons are on, so that would work very well together. Also, I would implement moving the planning and zoning department upstairs, downstairs to where, across from the engineering and building department. The planning and zoning and the engineering and building department work all together also. So a lot of times now, residents and project, people with projects come into Town Hall and they go to the, the planning office and they get some information and they have to go downstairs to the, to the building and engineering department. And then when they're done there, they have to come back up to the planning and zoning department. So if I would move them next to each other, then obviously they would work together, have more efficiencies, they share employees, and that's our whole, our whole thinking. Our Town Board has discussed that many times, of departments helping each other in their different departments, workers helping each other in the different departments, and that makes, you know, makes it better for all of them. Now, the back building, we've done a rough estimate, what was the budget you said, Scott?
Somewhere in the range of one hundred to one fifteen.
A hundred to a hundred and fifteen thousand for it to renovate the back building. And what we were thinking about is, once that project is complete, then we can move out the comptroller, no offense to you, Mark, but you would be going into that back building, and then we would start renovating each office as we would go along, putting new LED lighting in each office, carpeting, painting, you know, not a whole lot, but just a little renovate of the, the, the office space, and also eventually renovating the bathrooms upstairs and downstairs. The LED lighting, I, I contacted Central Hudson, there's a few providers that they work with the Central Hudson Indoor Lighting Program, which they install, install the LED lighting. So I'll be meeting with a couple of businesses, a couple of those businesses to gather information on a quote from them. But to do all this, we have to cut somewhere. And I would love to be, and I plan on being budget neutral, so whatever dollars we're going to be spending on this, it's going to come somewhere else in our budget. And I discussed that with all the board members and they were very enthusiastic and helpful and about that, and I thank all of them. But, you know, we have to find the funds in the budget, and we always try to do that. We need probably about two hundred thousand, maybe two hundred and twenty-five, half of that which is for the, the new space in the back. But that could extend the life of this building another fifteen or twenty years possibly. And, you know, I don't think the town is in the position to build a new Town Hall now or in the foreseeable future, so I think this is, you know, a good starting point. And what I would really love to do is change the windows, especially on this first floor, they are fifty-two years old, they're not energy efficient. I'd like to see what kind of budget we have afterwards, but Scott, that's an expensive endeavor, isn't that?
If we're going to get into the storefronts on, on the three sides, yeah, and in the back, yeah.
So maybe something, we could take a look and see how much it would be, and I would ask, ask the board if they would consider that. If not, if it's too much, then we'll just go with the, the plan that we have in place. But, you know, it does cost us more in heating and air conditioning, those windows, and, you know, they're not energy efficient. But any, any thoughts or comments about that? No?
About the windows?
Oh, about the renovation in general.
No, I understand putting the departments closer together, that work together, that is more efficient and would help with the sharing of services, so we can discuss this.
Yeah, I just want to let you have your time if you have any comments about it, but that's what I'm proposing, and once we get further along, I'll give more information to the board. But basically, this is the plan for the back building, and the plan for inside is to do the, exactly what I said, carpeting and lighting. We do have some money in the budget currently for new heating and air conditioning unit, which it hasn't gone yet, but the other day, the, I don't know what corridor of the building, the right corner is, but it, we had to have our electrician and HVAC guy come and take a look with the heat, so that was a problem. But I'll give more information as we move along with that, but-
So total ballpark, that building, this building, two twenty-five, two fifty?
That's what we were thinking, two twenty-five. I wouldn't-
That's what we're setting as a budget, yeah.
If we went to, with the windows, I don't know, Scott.
Not including the windows. And we haven't even priced them yet, but it's going to be, yeah.
And most-
That's doing a lot in-house.
That's doing a lot in-house. A lot of our highway employees, there's, you know, a lot of carpenters and are willing to do the work, which will save us a lot of money, so we're lucky, very blessed to have them.
Then we'd look at bonding that roughly?
Yeah, we'd bond for fifteen or twenty years.
And that would work out to be how much a year?
About sixteen, sixteen-five.
So we're going to save twenty thousand dollars a year to pay for this?
We got to save about sixteen thousand a year to pay for it, yeah.
I've looked, we already looked in one of the departments to cut and we're pretty much, pretty much there.
You do realize that your office is like a long ways away from the bathroom? And you've always been right next door?
There's a-
You going to have a problem with that?
No, there's a bathroom.
Great observation. Great observation.
Oh, we're going to renovate this.
Trees out back.
Well, there's an office for you here, the storage room, right here.
Another lunchroom, too, geez.